Two, three, four, four guests on the 11th, Joe, how incredible that is for my soul. Um, if he was all in my, my room right now, it would be an, an active discussion meeting. So, thank you for being here. I see you with the book, Joe. Hope you've been reading. Um, I've, I've been busy, man. So I've, um, I've been studying what we're gonna study today, literally today. Been taking the photos and uh, doing it all on the train. So, we're gonna kind of study it together. Uh, and today we're gonna be talking about the last section of what it means to be part of an organisation. Why in, in Buddhism, you can, if you feel guided, practise in an organisation and, and, and what that's all about. So, let me just make Chris the co-host. Thank you for being here, bro. Um, so, as always, let me just make the, the disclaimer that this is not an SGI meeting. It's just a, it's just a book club with me, Aaron Indigo. And uh, thank you for being here, whether you're live right now or whether you're um, watching it in the future on YouTube. Uh, this is, this is gonna be like a living, a living lecture, I guess. And I'm, I'm noticing more and more people are coming to me and saying, yo, I, I watched it, man. Like, you're helping me understand Buddhism. And it's mad because once it's, live is very special, but it's also very special to know it's, you know, all of the whole sequence is, is online. So yeah, it's amazing. Also, as of course Johnny Gilbert, he knows we're doing this, but he never asked me to do this, um, even though he's very proud. And um, I'm gonna ask him maybe to say a few words potentially at the end. Come on, come on live. So uh, let's just jump straight in with um, chanting, if we can, for a few minutes as usual. Lift up the life state of all of us. Let us join the quantum field. Just so you know, I hold beads when I chant. These beads represent my life. Very, very briefly, uh, the two arms. And on this side is the head and the two legs. And uh, very, I could go into it for ages. But when I hold my beads, I'm holding my life. I'm taking total responsibility for my life. The abuse I've held, everything is, I take, I'm holding my life in my hands. And so, it's, you know, by no means is my prayer more powerful than yours, just because I have a Gohonzon to look at and I'm holding beads. Um, it's just, you know, it definitely helps me personally to um, in this realm as a 3D biological being, just have something to hold on to and to know this is my life. I'm taking responsibility for it. So when I'm chanting Nam Yo Haringe Kyo and I'm trying to raise my energy and I'm trying to join the quantum field or the ceremony in the air, as we call it as Buddhists, it's, it's me who's doing this. It's only me who can open up the doors to my life. It's only me who can sit there and chant for five minutes. No one, people can ask me to do it and talk to me about it and all of that. But it's only me, it's only us who can make that decision to change our life. And so um, it's very symbolic to me. Uh, what it means to hold my beads in my hands. And if you feel guided, I definitely have, I recommend having a look on, um, and I only buy them uh, from the SGI site. Have a look, man. They, they range from about fifteen pound to about a hundred and fifty, depending on what you're guided to. Um, if that's if you wanna kind of, we're on the 11th session now. So I feel I can talk to you as if you're all Bodhisattvas, you know, if you wanna develop this a little bit more. And take ownership of your life, you know, instead of just saying like, oh, I'm just doing this technique. I'm trying it out. It's like, no, I'm not, I'm not saying you have to call yourself a Buddhist, but definitely saying, no, I'm gonna, I'm holding my life in my hands. I know that this represents the body. I'm holding my body and I'm chanting for myself. It's just definitely helped me to, to make my practice slightly more concrete. So let's chant. It's seven parts. I'm gonna know that chant without. Eleven past. Nam Yo Haringe Kyo. 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 Rengue Kho Nam Yo Haringe Kho. 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 Rengue Kho Nam Yo Haringe Kho. 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 Rengue Kho Nam Yo Haringe Kho. 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 Rengue Kho Nam Yo Haringe Kho. 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 Rengue Kho Nam Yo Haringe Kho. Nam Yo Haringe Kho. Nam Yo Haringe Kho. Nam Yo Haringe Kho. Rengue Kho Nam Yo Haringe Kho. 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 Rengue Kho Nam Yo Haringe Kho. 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 Rengue Kho Nam Yo Haringe Kho. 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 Rengue Kho Nam Yo Haringe Kho. 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 Rengue Kho Nam Yo Haringe Kho. 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 Rengue Kho Nam Yo Haringe Kho. 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 Thank you. Amazing. I definitely feel charged and ready. So let's just jump straight in. Part three of um, what it means to be a part of the SGI. I'm drinking Seamus, of course, and frozen berries. Alright, let me share the screen. So, straight in. Part three, why choose SGI? Um, and again, I want everyone to, to um, to, to, to listen to this with an open mind. It's not about joining specifically the SGI, why I'm doing this. Uh, listen to it for why it's important just to be part of a group, why it's important for us as young people, um, as, 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 as Bodhisattvas. Why it's so important for us to just um, like potato skins, rub the skin on each other in the bag and it polishes each other. So it doesn't specifically have to be the SGI, but we are gonna talk about why the SGI is um, the most refined organisation for propagating Nichtrin Buddhism. So, it is the right in any free society for the individual to choose whether they want to be a part of an organisation or even a religion at all. For some, the idea will hold no appeal and that must be respected. I hope that the research I have outlined at least indicates the sound and substantial scientifical, scientifically proven benefits to participate in, in a religious group. But if one were to choose to be part of a religion, why partic- uh, particularly choose SGI Buddhism? What makes it stand out from other organisations? Without negating the effect of other faiths, I will suggest that SGI offers a highly evolved organisation on a grassroots level which has proved adaptive to the challenges of the modern age and been able to change suit uh, different cultural contexts around the world. What is different about SGI? Alfred North Whitehead wrote, "Religious principles may be eternal, but the expression of those principles require continual development." SGI has created a new paradigm of religion. In focusing on people, on actual proof, and most importantly on life, the formality and convention of religion, uh, religious practice has dropped away in the SGI. Clark Strand, former Zen Buddhist monk and spiritual writer, uh, places great hope in SGI's radical reconfiguring of religion. With no dress code, no priests or monks and no id- uh, no identical ar- ar- architectural style, what are strand is left when the appearance of religion falls away? He finds the answer in the core life values of SGI, basic human concerns that transcend religion. In this, in his three hour di- dialogue with uh, Minara Harada, the current president of the Sokogakai. Uh, and he's, and the Sokogakai, remember, is in Japan. I'm a member. We're a member, we're, we're talking about SGI, which is the organisation, which is the global. Uh, so, Strand is astonished that not one Buddhist term was used. His message of peace and goodwill transcending cultural affections. The spirit of SGI movement is distinctly modern, but takes its cue from Nichtrin himself in his flexible revisionist approach. When it comes to studying the teachings of Buddhism, one must first learn to understand the time. He wrote, "In a democratic age, a religious, a religion focused on and for the people needs to have as its focus difficulties and challenges that come up in daily life and provide a network of moral support to sustain people, to overcome obstacles and enact real personal change." And that's why it's important right now as a religion or as an organisation, as a philosophy, it's like we have to challenge the, the difficult things in, in society right now, the, 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 the very difficult things that happen in. Uh, any true religion or faith spirituality, uh, you can't run away from them things and try and just transcend them. It's very much about how do we transform this age and confront them very difficult questions. Jane Hurst of Gallaudet University describes SGI as a pragmatic religion aimed at making things better in the here and now based on its values. The importance of discussion meetings. Central to SGI are the locally based district discussion meetings, gatherings of local members and their friends which take place in a member's house. Unlike a religious service or a philosophical lecture, the dynamic is interactive and the floor is open for anyone to share, inspire or offer and receive support. A good discussion meeting holds space where people can be authentic and return home rejuvenated and refreshed. During some of the most difficult times, discussion meetings have been there for me to share my challenges and receive support and guidance. And you, you guys will be surprised, there's literally no doubt discussion meetings happening uh, only a mile away from your home. You know, it really is the um, the biggest Buddhist organisation and they're everywhere, you know, like, like I only have to walk five minutes to my local discussion meeting or I offer them at my house. Obviously, right now with the pandemic, it's slightly different. But um, it, it blew my mind when I first realised, you know, literally every area on the underground is covered and there's districts and there's young men and men leaders and women and women leaders that look after you. As soon as you just make that call on the SGI website, I'd love to, you know, take that next step. They're everywhere. During some of the most difficult times, discussion meetings have been there for me to share my challenges and receive support and guidance. In one year as a class teacher, uh, in one year as a class teacher, I had a particularly challenging and difficult class with a pupil seemingly pulling the strings of many of his classmates and subtly trying to undermine the learning. It was the opportunity to even shed a tear in my local discussion meeting and receive inspiration and support that kept me going. In turn, I go to discussion meetings with the aim to inspire and bring hope to those who, who need it. The discussion meeting format goes back to the leadership of Tsubunuru Makuguchi in wartime Japan, who appreciated the capacity of open dialogue and empowered, uh, and empower all the participants. As Clark Strand describes it, "The monthly discussion meeting is where the rubber meets the road, Buddhism is put to the test and the truth of its teachings are manifested by members through personal stories of overcoming obstacles to happiness." And that's why I always talk to you guys about uh, saying, when you're chanting, you need to chant for actual proof. You need to prove this Buddhism, not because you've joined this call, if you've read a book, you need to experience it for yourself. And then when you experience it and you're sitting there with loads of other people, they're all chanting Nam Yo Haringe Kyo in your local area, and they're all just being very vulnerable, talking about the problems of human life. Uh, and you realise, wow, um, it's like it says at the last sentence, "And the truth of its teachings are manifested by members through personal stories of overcoming obstacles to happiness." Strand also describes the discussion meeting model as opposed tribal delivery system. The reason why SGI can, through the natural lines of human relationships in a locality, grow and spread exponentially with no need for facilities, resources or buildings. The autonomous nature of these meetings is also empowering. The local district or group sets the theme, moderation is shared by the participants each month, and other than chanting for a successful and rewarding meeting, no one quite knows how it will unfold. An egal- egalitarian, I can never say this word, egalitarian and accessible structure. This focus on the grassroots as the centre of the SGI movement is also special. It is eager and cooperative as opposed to detective and instructive. I could not describe myself as a classic rebel. Uh, I could not describe myself as a classic rebel. I kept my head down at school and made it to Cambridge University, but I have uh, felt keenly the sense of oppression when forced to conform and submit to organisational structures where an individual had little rule to say. I hated being a prefect at school. By the end of my time at university, I cut myself off from the college and was doing my own thing. At work, I found certain kind of bosses intolerable to work under. Within SGI, however, I have always felt free not only to express myself, but also to be myself in terms of my response to the teachings and my spiritual journey. This book is in and of itself an expression of that sense of freedom. The Buddhist scholar David Chappell commented, "This universal affirmation of the value of every human being is found in Buddhism, Christianity and Islam. But the way Sokogakai applied this principle to all strata of society without demanding a change in lifestyle was exceptional and represents a distinctive feature. With no robes, no change of names, no rejection of worldly goals, no requirement to live communally, SGI integrates with normal mainstream society, making membership possible not only without compromising one's normal daily, daily life, but through its personal empowerment, providing a lever to, uh, to be even more successful and integrated in society." The accessibility of SGI is also down to the lack of expense in practising its teachings. Unlike many contemporary self-development courses or even other forms of Buddhism centred on residential retreats, the core of SGI practice is free. For example, in SGI UK, there is no cost for receiving the Gohonzon, no charge to attend local meetings and any contribution to the upkeep of centres is what's known as the Kosan Ruffu Fund. Are entirely voluntarily, uh, voluntary. This model of participation, free of cost, is very important to ensuring the div- diversity of SGI. Whether you live in a gated mansion or a council flat, whether a successful business owner or an unemployed student, you have access, you can have access to SGI equality equally, sorry, and benefit from the practice equally. This has also led to the racial diversity of the movement. SGI USA as a case in point, being by far the most racially diverse Buddhist movement in America with a large proportion of African American and Hispanic members. Hurst also notes that as early as nineteen sixty-eight, there was a high proportion of LGBT participants in some SGI US districts. SGI's teachings of enlightenment in the here and now also have a practicality to it, which opens it to all willing, willingly to try the practice. There are no hidden complicated teachings gradually revealed to the practitioner in stages, no esoteric or otherworldly philosophies to grapple with. Whilst there is plenty to study to deepen one's understanding, the simple practice of chanting Nam Yo Haringe Kyo is ultimately a great leveller. Someone who has chanted for a week and someone who has chanted for thirty years can still attain the same life state in the moment. And that's a very important thing. I've been around members that have been chanting, you know, forty years, sometimes longer. And the ones that are really sincere and know what they're, how to practise Buddhism, they always say to me, you know, Aaron, when you open your Gohonzon, when I open my Gohonzon, we're both brand new today. It's not about how much we've, I've chanted. It's not like I have accumulated, obviously we're accumulating, transforming our karma and we're accumulating good karma all the time. But at the same time, every time we open up our Gohonzon, we're, we're new together in this moment and we can, and, and that's, if you can remember, we're talking about the ten life states and even within Buddhahood, the life state of hell exists and even within hell, the life state of Buddhahood exists. So even the person that claims to have reached Buddhahood and who's really in a life state of Buddhahood, it doesn't mean that tomorrow that hell won't be present. So therefore spirituality is always about this present moment. And when you're around a really sincere older member, you literally feel completely equal to them. And to me, that, that's what it really feels like to be around um, a strong spiritual person. If there's any sense that they're higher, higher vibrating than me, it's not right because no one's higher vibrating than you. Even the most low satanic person, I wouldn't consider myself high vibrating. They're having their human experience at their moment. Do you know what I mean? So without getting, without going deep. And so let me read that last part again. Someone who has chanted for a week and someone who has chanted for thirty years can still attain the same life state in the moment. As we open up our Gohonzon or as we decide today, I'm gonna sit down in front, I'm gonna put the kids to sleep for a minute and gonna look at the, the candle and chant even just for two minutes. That is no different to someone who's been doing it for fifty years down the road to you. A system of support. The anti-authoritarianism, which sent Toda and Makag- uh, Makuguchi to prison for their beliefs, colours the organisational structure of the SGI in unique ways. The organisation is a highly structured system of support. Jim Cohen, a social scientist and pioneering member of SGI UK, describes it metaphorically. Just as atoms are in molecules, which are in cells, which are in an organism, so local members form together to create a larger group which combine with other larger groups and so on until a large group covers an entire country. So for me, for instance, it would be in, I'm in a, uh, I'm in, uh, I don't really wanna reveal my exact area online, but like you'd be in a small group, say in um, Tooting and then Tooting would be in South West London. And then you get what I mean? It gets, so you, you'd practise with members in your small, in like South Tooting. And then you'd go to the next level up where all the members in Tooting and maybe a few other surrounding areas in that borough, all, we then, they'd do like a chapter study together once a month. And then that would be joint, and we would have summer course all together at a hotel, for instance. It would be all of the people from South West London. So you see how it's like, in that sense. And it's the most incredible thing ever. I just love it. It's like when I'm with my North London, it's like a gang. It's like, yo, my North London brothers, let's go. It's so amazing. It's the best. Um, in each of these groups are leaders, um, and I also am one. I'm a vice district leader. So I, I have a young men's leader. Um, he's actually, he should be in the men's district now, but he's so incredible that he's holding back and remaining in the youth district to support me because otherwise I'd be all by myself in my area. But um, so I'm his vice. Um, and it will explain how that means absolutely nothing. It doesn't mean I'm, I'm better than someone who's gonna join tomorrow, but uh, simply because of my, I guess my itching in, which is my seeking spirit, I can be in that position. So leaders ta- uh, take responsibility for their respective sized group. But are conceived not in a role of authority, but as Dasako Akida has emphasised, the president of the Sokogakai International, to serve and support those leaders and members in the next group smaller to themselves. This in turn creates what is often described as an inverse pyramid of support rather than an authority with the top leaders at the bottom and the local groups spread at the top and at the forefront of the movement. And Dasako Akida has always made that very clear. Yes, he is the leader of the Sokogakai International, the president, but in a sense, the pyramid is upside down. He's behind us making sure that the ordinary grassroots people are the, are the forefront and uh, it feels so normal and natural, but there is really no other organisation on the planet, in my opinion, that really does it like this. Um, it's all about the dignity of life at the order and it's, it's, if you know my life and you know my business life and my career as a model, that leaks into what I'm speaking about now. You always hear me talking about the, it's the model. It's the individual person. It's we, we, it's the dignity of our life that needs to be um, seen, not the, not, not the people above us. And it's just by that simple practice of reading this philosophy, it strengthens everything else in my actual life, you know? And um, so, and Buddhism isn't a thing I do in an hour and then I'm, I live a separate life. Buddhism is only found in daily life and the struggles of daily life. Uh, that's my perspective and the perspective of us as SGI members. So Jim Cowan writes in his recent book, The Britain Potential, about the makeup of organisations based on Wilbur consciousness. These colour codes are an organisation based on strengths and weaknesses. For example, at an extreme, a red organisation has strong egocentric leadership and is ruthless when it responds to threats and opportunities internally and externally. The mafia being one example. Market-based organisations are quite often, uh, are quite often orange, which although led by reason and responsive to change, are materialistic and disconnected from the inner life of their employees and members. So like when I was working at Urban Outfitters on Oxford Street, yeah, it's, it's kind of cool and whatever, but like, they don't really care so about the dignity of my life. So we're using different organisations as just examples. And then we use, and then the SGI is like, oh my God, it's all about the dignity of life of the member. But the organisation of um, Urban Outfitters is not about my life. And, and that's also fine. It's, you know, it's a different playground we're playing in. Um, Cowan, Jim Cowan, uh, who's a beautiful man. I've had guidance from him a few times, strict. Uh, Jim Cowan clas- classifies SGI as a teal organisation with self-organising autonomous teams and humanistic leadership. He describes a rare kind of unity fostered in SGI, a unity built on the uniqueness of what each individual brings to themselves, combined with a profound spiritual unity of sharing the same profound purpose in life. That purpose ultimately being the deep happiness of ourselves and all others. SGI members uh, experience one another's hearts and the organisation itself is transparently ablaze with heartfelt interaction, friendship and trust. Cowan proposes that this is a completely different way of doing organised religion. Challenging corruption and authoritarianism. SGI is made up of diverse human beings, diverse in outlook, diverse in where they are in their own personal development and spiritual journey. So it is testament to the openness and transparency of the organisation that the inherent tendency in humanity towards corruption, authoritarianism and self-interest is warned against in Akida's writings and openly challenged. For example, in volume ten of The Human Revolution, which records the Osaka campaign in nineteen sixty, nineteen fifty-six, a turning point in the Sokogakai's expansion in Japan, the imperious and authoritarian behaviours of some senior leaders visiting from Tokyo are written about in detail. By the way, The Human Revolution is one of, it is my favourite book. There's nothing compares to it. Um, it's, it's written by Dasako Akida about his mentor Jose Toda, who was the person that basically really started the Sokogakai after coming out of prison. No, no words. Like for my twenty-seventh birthday, I decided I'm gonna just read this book. That's how, that's how deep it was. Um, so instead of glossing over these difficult realities, Akida uses them as a case study in how not to behave as a leader. In The New Human Revolution, uh, which I haven't read, there's thirty volumes and that's about Dasako Akida leaving Japan and spreading the Sokogakai across the world. Written by Dasako Akida, but in a pen name, he calls himself Shinichi Yamamoto. So in The New Human Revolution, volume nineteen, so this book nineteen, Shinichi, Akida's pen name, admonishes the central leader in the United States about behaving in a dictatorial and authoritarian manner. Becoming authoritarian and bureaucratic is a sign of ineffectiveness. If a leader takes credibility in humanistic qualities, others respect, he inevitably starts abusing his position and authority in an effect to make others follow him. But arrogantly issuing of, uh, orders only alienates others. Never forget to be grateful and appreciative to everyone's efforts. It's, it's one's humanity and character that attracts others. I find this confrontation, confrontation with authoritarianism refreshing. Some may find the idea of organised problematic, uh, some may find the idea of organisations problematic precisely because of this human tendency. But for anything to spread and have an impact on humanity, organisation and cooperation is necessary. Instead, it is SGI's wariness of corruption that signals its willingness to challenge such tendencies when they arrive. Shin Yatomi, the late study chief of SGI USA summarizes this sufficiently when he points out that while organisations and leaders consist of human beings, corruption will inevitably appear at some point. Acknowledging this reality is key for a religion to then develop an antidote, the wisdom to see wrongdoing and authoritarianism as true, as it truly is, and the courage to challenge it. My experience of facing author- authoritarianism, that's a difficult word. My own experience of an imperious leader almost uh, upped, impeded my practice. While I was in the youth division of SGI UK, which I'm in, um, my local men's chapter leader was very cascading about how I encouraged members to participate in activities. I was very upset by this and had a dialogue with him, which from my perspective did not resolve our disagreement. How could a Buddhist behave like this? I asked myself. Does this practice work if people can act like this within the organisation? This was the obstacle in my thinking and also my delusion. He was coming from a different place and perspective and had no more intention of triggering seething anger in me and doubt in my practice as I had in him. He saw himself as being helpful in strictly correcting me. During this time, I called a senior leader after a long, after a talk for a very brief guidance. He simply told me, he simply said to me, "This is your anger, not his." In other words, I had to take responsibility. I kept chanting for him and the issue despite my resentment, directing my chanting for his happiness and wellbeing. The situation affected me so greatly that it led me to allow my practice to take a backseat in my life, though I continued to chant a bit and attend discussion meetings. The resolution was not overnight and took much chanting and reflection, but I eventually came to realise that the anger I felt was down to my own ego's attachment to my status as an SGI leader, not merely his authoritative tone. He too was on his own journey and over the next couple of years softened his style as a leader, doing his own human revolution in a transformation with his Buddhist practice. Before he moved out of the local area, our relationship had completely transformed and he greatly supported me in the, uh, in difficult situations that arose. When he moved away, I felt genuine sadness at his loss and gratitude, uh, and gratitude that was, that what seemed to be a completely intractable conflict had been transformed with the power of the chanting. The experience gave me great confidence that any relationship can be transformed with this practice. A philosophy of flexibility and adaptation. SGI offers a radical reconfiguring of the religious framework, but equally important is the fact that this structure is not set in stone. One of the potential weaknesses of the old religious model is its resistance to change and improvement. All religious organisations inevitably change over time, but those with a mandate supposedly set by an all supreme deity or those with an authoritative priestly or monistic mod- uh, body is in a position of privilege and power, may find moving with the times difficult. Such organisations, organizations are likely to come up against what may be perceived as the way things should be according to scripture. This can result in a potentially traumatic conflict between conservative and more liberising elements. SGI suffer less from this difficult, difficulty because it is underpinned by a philosophy of flexibility. This derives from two contrasting precepts in Buddhist uh, theology. Zuen Shinyo Nochi, wisdom to adapt truth to varying circumstances, and Fuen Shiniori, the rationality of immutable truth. The immutable truth is Nam Yo Haringe Kyo, must stay the same. But how this is shared and conveyed can have a myriad of different manifestations. As a result, SGI can interpretate, interpret and apply Nichtrin Buddhism according to the times unfettered by ortho- orthodoxy. This process of adaptation and evolving is seen clearly in the case of SGI. This process of adaptation and evolving is seen clearly in the case of S G I USA. Beginning in nineteen sixty, the president, uh, with President Akida, first visits to the States, the organization started with a number of mainly Japanese female members, wives of American servicemen who had returned from the Far East. Meetings were held exclusively in Japanese until nineteen sixty-three. By nineteen seventy, however, the American movement had expanded rapidly across the section of the American public, particularly the baby boomer generation. S G I USA had transformed itself from a distinctive Japanese organization to one that was overtly American, not only in its membership, but unconsciously celebrating American values and festivals such as Independence Day. David Muckcheck of the University of California described this process as isomorphism, where organizations take on key features shared with other, other organizations in that culture. S G I would consciously describe this process with the Buddhist term zio beanie, acting according to local customs as long as the fundamental principles of Buddhism are not violated. I love this, one of my favorite terms that is zio beanie, acting according to local customs as long as the fundamental principles of Buddhism are not violated. And uh, I remember we were talking about the Lotus Sutra and how Buddhism, um, it's, it's the, it's the, the true heritage of Buddhism is always moving, it's always developing, it's always changing, like who would have thought fifty years ago it would be on Zoom calls, uh, and who would have thought it would have been a young mixed race brother who's propagating it? And using my way I perceive life and I have to use, I have to use my truth and everything that I am to understand Buddhism and perceive it. Um, and the immutable truth is Nam Myo Haringe Kyo, but how I speak to my brothers when they've just come out of prison or my friend who has a Rambo knife or my athletic friends or it can transform, I change and, and we call it um, expedient means, I can use expedient means, if someone's into like Reiki and yoga, I can really go into it that way and use that kind of stuff. Or if someone's into even psychedelics, you can use that as an expedient means, for instance, it's just an example, you know, um. Uh, so acting according to local customs as long as the fundamental principles of Buddhism are not violated. And I'm just gonna talk about this in a second about how in India, they, a very Hindu country, um, when, when, when Buddhism went to India, it was actually, they were actually asked not to um, give up their ideologies toward deities and stuff straight away or you, and, and, and there's a reason for that because that's their culture. In the nineteen seventies, concert groups and marching bands celebrated Americans by centari. And in later years, outward facing institutions such as the Boston Research Center for Peace, later the Akida Center for Peace, Learning and Dialogue, and Socha University of America involved S G I USA in established frameworks of public life. As a result, as a result, S G I USA, while complying with the widely accepted rules of behavior of American social life, has not been attacked by the American media to the same extent of other new religious movements. This, Marchek points out, has also been the case with family and friends of those practicing who at first, potentially concerned, come to realize nothing untoward or out, outside normal social expectations take place when someone becomes a member of the S G I. You know, when I became a mem, when I started telling my friends, I'm a religious now, bro, they're not thinking, you know what, are you one of them guys, you know, like, um, maybe doing like hair Krishna on Oxford Street, you know, like there's a gang of people wearing robes and stuff. That'll be an example of like this kind of outside the normal social expectations. Um, you could basically be an S G I member and a Buddhist and no one would have a clue. You know, there's absolutely, I've, I've got my tattoos, I'm still gonna get my neck done, I'm, I've got dreadlocks, you know, it's, it's, there's, there's nothing about the biology that you need to change. It doesn't talk about, there's no mention of um, not eating meat anymore, anything like that, even though I think naturally it does, but slowly you do start just feeling more in tune with life and, and that's a whole different thing though and a whole different conversation. But the fact that it doesn't even mention that is super important. The growth of the movement in India in very recent years can also be in part accounted for by a cultural adaptation. In deeply religious society, Barak Sokogakai, and that's what just the Indian version of the Sokogakai International is called, Barak Sokogakai. So Barak Sokogakai members in India are told that they can still celebrate Hindu festivals and have Hindu shrines left in their homes while still practicing Nichtrin Buddhism in the spirit of shio beanie. B S G, Barak Sokogakai members, uh, and beginners are told they are practicing a teaching rather than exclusively a new religion. And so they can continue to maintain Hindu rituals. An exclusive stance, as was taken in nineteen fifty's Japan, is seen as a relic of the past and just would not have worked out in India. And in Japan in nineteen fifty's, Jose Toda, that's why I love him, super strict, he was super strict, like this is only Nichtrin Buddhism. And I totally understand it, the times are different, we're not in twenty twenty-one. Uh, in that time, there was so much false Buddhism, it was be, we don't know what it was like to be in Japan, first of all. And uh, there were so many false priests taking money and it was just so diluted. So an exclusive stance was absolutely necessary, we wouldn't be here today had he not saved the uh, the threads of true Buddhism that was left and, and absolutely bring back the truth of the Lotus Sutra for us and it required the strictest. And that's why I believe true Buddhism and, and, and the power of Nam Myo Haringe Kyo had to blossom at the worst of times. Uh, as they always say, the rose comes from the concrete, the lotus blossoms when there's the most soil on top of it in the swamp. And it was just after World War Two, you know, and, and Hiroshima, Nagasaki and uh, it was in Japan, which is like the strictest of, like the way they just, everything, the way that they bow, everything's so strict, so I, for me, in my head, that's why Buddhism, it's not, it wasn't even in India or in the, in the latter day of the lore, it came back in Japan, Nichtrin Daishonin times. And, and then Jose Toda times, strictest you could ever imagine, but strict with absolute compassion, knowing that if we don't do this, the future um, may not be the same, so I love that. So yeah, an exclusive stance, as was taken in nineteen fifty's Japan, is seen as a relic of the past, which is no longer required. If I was going around telling everyone, you have to practice this, like you're wrong to be going to church, like no one would listen and it would not be the truth anymore. Um, would not have worked in India. This does not mean Indian members are any less focused or passionate about their Buddhist practice, in fact, the contrary is the case. And this has been the determining factor in their growth. The scholar Richard Hugh Seeger summed up this point when he wrote, Buddhism of all sorts is found almost everywhere today, but a few groups equal the Gakai in either its pragmatic effort to adapt to new situations and its genius for organization. Spiritual independence. S G I's already existing, evolving and adaptive mindset was given jet propulsion by its split with the Nichtrin Shoshu priesthood. Rather than seeing this event as a sad and unfortunate occurrence, academics are generally in agreement that it was an inevitable part of the process of development. As the academic Jane Hurst wrote, the pragmatic goal orientated this worldly focus of the Sokogakai lay believers, conflict with the priestly, mystical and other worldly focus of the Nichtrin Shoshu priesthood. In lightly of this, in light of this, it is remarkable that the cooperation between nineteen fifty-one and nineteen ninety-one lasted as long as it did. Nichtrin Shoshu members may still express bitterness and resentment towards S G I, but for S G I members, the split was a liberation from the shackles of dogma, outdated ritual and superstition. And just to brush your memories up, remember the Nichtrin Shoshu priesthood, they have priests, they chant Nam Myo Haringe Kyo to a Dai Go Honzen, the main Go Honzen that they believe was writ by Nichtrin Daishonin. And they believe that their high priests has true lineage all the way back to Nichtrin. Um, and then to, to Shaka Mooney, which we've already discussed in the Lotus Sutra, isn't possible because Shaka Mooney didn't even write the Lotus Sutra. It was five to seven hundred years after he was even on this planet, realm, earth, yeah, and um, so. Yeah, uh, that's why, that's what it's talking about, so Nichtrin Shoshu, it's, it's like we were together, uh, and, and, and from nineteen fifty-one to nineteen ninety-one, we were all still together, which is um, crazy. And that's why they're saying it's, it's so mad that we even were together for that long. Because, uh, and that's why it was our liberation as S G I members and the song for it is Ota Joy. Um, and the reason quickly, um, Sensei once played Ota Joy, I believe, or Dais, uh, Jose Toda. They played Ota Joy at a celebration and the, the priesthood were disgusted because the Ota Joy song is uh, Christian based or God based. And they believed that like, how dare you play like a God based, Christian based song? And um, Sensei was just talking about the, it's the spirit of the song, that's why he wanted to play it. And that was actually kind of like the seed to why we started to split from uh, what they considered like the true lineage of Nichtrin Buddhism and the S G I, uh, which Jose Toda started with Tsubunaru Makuguchi. And this is why we're here today. So uh, I'll read that again with that in mind, the pragmatic goal orientated uh, this worldly focus of the Sokogakai lay believers conflicts with the priestly, mystical, other worldly focus of Nichtrin Shoshu priesthood. In light of this, it is remarkable that the cooperation between nineteen fifty-one and nineteen ninety-one lasted as long as it did. Nichtrin Shoshu members may still express bitterness and resentment towards S G I, but the, but for the S G I, the split was a liberation from the shackles of dogma, outrate, uh, outdated ritual and superstition. Instead, S G I was truly free to express itself as a progressive, liberalized and flexible movement. The S G I Charter of nineteen ninety-five encapsulated the sense of freedom by formally decentralizing ju, uh, control from Japan in Article Six. S G I shall respect the independence and autonomy of its constituent, constituent organizations in accordance with the conditions prevailing in each country. Basically saying the S G I, we're not gonna be absolutely strict like, um, we would be in Sokogakai. We're gonna spread this across the world and we're gonna allow Africa to, to, to practice how Africa needs to practice because Africa's a heavily Muslim country. For instance, like, so we're gonna allow them to adapt it to their own culture, as long as Nam Myo Haringe Kyo is the immutable truth, we're gonna let that happen. British people, we're quite uppity, you know, like put out like, we wanna do our, our buttons up and we're a bit more stiff and we don't speak about us. So we're gonna allow the British to do it how we had to do it. S G I USA's, they practice differently because they've got their culture. We don't know nothing about like Independence Day and stuff, so why would we celebrate something, so you know what I mean? If it was like very strict, like it is in most other like kind of eastern religions, when you go down like, and you see them in the UK, they have no connection to society, it's like, it's kind of almost like you escape to um, somewhere else for a while and then you come back, but within the S G I, it's absolutely molded within. Uh, so yeah, that was in nineteen ninety-five, this is when they said, S G I shall respect independence and autonomy of its constituent organizations in accordance with the conditions prevailing in each country. Gong Yo, the recit- recitation, recitation of, so when you, when, when we're um, I go um, Niji Sasonju, so when we're reciting parts of the Lotus Sutra, it, before this, it used to take thirty minutes. But Daisako Akida and, and the leaders realized this needs to be something that someone can do in the West. And no one's gonna be, this is not gonna be able to flourish around the world if everyone has to do like a half an hour ritual in the morning kind of thing. So it turned, they turned it from thirty minutes to basically three minutes and it's like the absolute creme de la creme, the, the prime, the essence of the Lotus Sutra. Uh, is what we chant. And um, if you're, when you, you naturally kind of get quite fast, you, you do it in like less than four minutes. And then you chant, then you chant Nam Myo Haringe Kyo till your heart's content. So I could chant literally one minute because I've got to get a train and then I finish off. Or I, I try and challenge myself most days to do an hour. Um, shortened, uh, to, uh, no, it would take thirty minutes and uh, they were shortened and this could be achieved in three, leaving time to focus on the core practice of chanting Damoku. Interfaith dialogue and respect for other religions become paramount with um, synopses and events engaging with other faiths and other denominations of Buddhism. At the turn of the century, only three other Buddhist groups had representation at the United Nations and sponsored local United Nations associations. S G I offers a model of engaged Buddhism where personal practice leads to social, uh, solid social reforms. An example being S G I's involvement as a founding member of ICAN, the Nobel Peace Prize winning campaign to abolish nuclear weapons. The United Nations Treaty on the Pro- Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons initiated by ICAN achieved its fiftieth eradication by a nation, a nation state and has therefore come into force. Although the major nuclear powers still stand against this move, it has the potential to undermine the worldwide acceptance of these devastating weapons and contribute to their abolition. If there is value in Buddhist practice, it should lessen the suffering within society. Let me read that again, so that's all it is, if there is value in Buddhist practice, it should lessen the suffering within society. Seeger summarizes this impulse well when he writes, there is a strong pragmatic streak in Gakai spirituality that does not shrink from the fact that the movement needs dedicated members, a strong motive, solid doctrine and a practice, focused leaders, social awareness, money and a political will to transform the world. A dynamic and highly organized movement. But let us not forget where the impetus for all of this comes from, the wellspring derived from tapping the energy and potential within every individual through practicing Nichtrin Buddhism. Daniel Mont- Montgomery, a commentator, a commentator of the movement in the nineteen eighties, wrote that what stood out regarding S G I members was not that they were more religious or even happier, as this may be true of any faith. What is special about them is that they become more energetic, a new vitality permeates their activities. They chant vigorously, sing vigorously, walk vigorously or even run instead of walk and work vigorously. They expect to be successful at whatever they do and generally they are. Montgomery also records the impression of a manager of Akron Civic Center after his venue played host to the American Associates General Meeting in nineteen seventy-three. After a while said, I said, this thing is going to be the most fantastically organized thing I ever saw. Because everyone was taking care of all those little details to the last inch. And when the show began, we were glad we were in the dark because we were standing there with tears coming out of our eyes and we weren't even members of the group. This demonism is something that was not just a byproduct of early enthusiasm. It continues to pulse vibrantly through S G I to this day. One recent experience of my own was in March two thousand eighteen, when S G I UK's youth division galvanized the movement to hold free events across the country with six, uh, six thousand young people attending, to convey a sense of optimism, to provide hope to a seemingly listless and downcast generation. Leading up to the event, tickets, sales were sluggish, but a sudden surge of activity and efforts meant this event were many times oversubscribed. I took my elder daughter and her friend to the event. Outside the Hammersmith Apollo was a sea of people. The temperature was bitterly cold and a light flurry of sleet fell at times, but once inside, the atmosphere was electrifying. We sat wrapped at highly professionally staged dance, music and performance pieces were combined with film and heartfelt experiences. Just like at the Koto Concert in Saga, my heart was touched deeply. This was something very special, far more than an ordinary performance and something very profound for the United Kingdom. I also, you may have seen some of you on my Instagram, I was part of that, it was one of the most, without doubt, actually, uh, no doubt, the best moment of my life, creative life, kind of didn't even expect to the last moment, what was even required of me, uh, which was basically to end the entire event. Uh, uh, three thousand six hundred people in front of me, um, I had wrote a monologue about a month before and I was going through a very sticky breakup and I just didn't really even remember the monologue. And then like five days or something before it kind of got to the point where they were like, oh, come down to King's Cross, let's start, start rehearsing. So I came and when I turned up, I read, there's like fifty dancers in front of me and they were like, yeah, you're gonna rap walking through them all and then we're all gonna put our hands up and the, the curtains are gonna drop and that's how the whole show ends. I was like, wait, what? And um, but I'm confident, man, when it comes to kind of like, I perform, you know, I practiced, um, I studied like theater and I've always been, I've always been like in Greece and I was Bugsy Malone in high school, I was the main guy and I was that person. So I, I felt I could do it, but I had a lot of nerves. And the guidance I got from the uh, person who was doing it all was like, trust your life, like chant hard, but trust your life. And um, trust that it's been lifetimes for you to get to that moment and considering, like it says the last sentence here, uh, is very profound for the United Kingdom, considering since Nichtrin Daishonin was born in twelve twenty-two to the point of um, Hammersmith Apollo two thousand eighteen, the first time that that many people had ever gathered to hear Nam Myo Haringe Kyo be spoken about. And it was me who had the, the honor to close it and rap. Uh, it was, uh, yeah, life-changing and, oh yeah, there's no words for it. So to change is to survive and thrive, we're nearly finished, by the way, guys. Community is an integral part of what makes us human. And this is the most essential part here, whether it's about joining the S G I, it's about community, I always speak online about, uh, it's community over competition. The more we lean on each other, the more, say you've got a bunch of friends and you're all inside the same, you work in the same industry, this is the time to lean on each other and share your clients and help each other, yeah? This is the time because you, the, the, the good karma you'll accumulate is unfathomable and it should always be like that. Um, community over competition, but we live in such an egoic time, especially if we're from like the UK where there's not much community anymore and so, and everything, the pandemic, there's like, everything's panicky. So everyone wants to just hold on to as much as they can, look at the uh, the, the toilet roll example or the um, the petrol. As soon as anything slightly happens, there's no sense of community, there's no sense of, is the old lady upstairs gonna have something? It's like, how much can I gather for myself? So the more we can step out of ego, and that's what to me it means to transcend ego, it doesn't mean like I'm no longer Aaron Indigo, it means I've, I've transcended the, the three. I know I'm always gonna be protected by the universe, I don't need to be protected by Tesco Express. You know what I mean? When you have that ex, that, that deep level of trust, that's when you're in community. So the whole thing today about the S G I, uh, is more about look to join a community, whether that's a community of friends, it doesn't actually have to be a labeled organization. Create that community yourself, you know? Um, there's even like Telegram communities, Instagram, like, just like, because remember, we're all, we're all potatoes with a lot of skin on. But when we're all ruffled up in a bag, the skin just become, comes off and we're all shining fresh potatoes. So community is an integral part of what makes us human, an essential element of how we function that can be tracked back to our hunter gatherer past seventy thousand years ago and beyond. But for communities and organizations, the structured framework for communities, just to sustain, they must evolve, the evolving Buddha. But uh, must adapt to thrive, must change to survive. This being the case, S G I's future looks bright if it continues to reconfigure in an age where social and technological changes across the globe are recurring at a pace unseen in human history. Sokogakai and S G I have always been reform movements. With Makuguchi, at first it was a form of education. With Toda, it was reform, it was to reform Japanese society, that's why it was so strict. It wasn't, it wasn't the whole world, it was just Ja- Japan. And then for Akida, the world was S G I's stage, who's still alive, ninety-three years old right now in Japan. Even though he's like, I'm guessing he's, he's, he's no longer taking that main stage. Even though he's writing guidance for the art of living every month somehow. Sokogakai and S G I have always been reform movements. With Makuguchi, at first it was reform of education, with Toda it was reform, it was to reform Japanese society and for Akida it was the world. Uh, we will look at the development of Akida's vision and philosophy for world peace in more detail in the next chapter. But that desire for reform has allowed S G I to reform itself too and this must continue. Clark Stran has high hopes for S G I when he writes, uh, a post-trivial, life-centered religious movement like the S G I, with its global mission to promote universal human values like peace, education and culture, is right on time. At its core, S G I is about one thing, the one thing that Kishab Krishna taught me in a Chinese restaurant in Kathmandu. That Buddhism is not about ascending the mountain to some perfect enlightenment, but it is about caring for others, deep, profound care. Deep, profound care based on the respect for the dignity of life in uh in front of us. They always say in Buddhism, don't try to save the world, look at the person in front of you and you realise how hard it suddenly becomes. Only through community and organisations can this take place in its fullest sense and through such altruistic actions we find liberation. Daisaku Akida writes, the organisation of faith is not something that holds you back or restricts you. Rather, it is a springboard that enables you to develop yourself to the utmost and to lead the most dynamic existence. It is the most precious place for carrying out our Buddhist practice. Far from being a restrict, far from being a restriction, S G I provides true freedom through social connectedness and social responsibility in an age where social cohesion and shared common consciousness have been lost. So, for me, as a member of the S G I, a solid member of the S G I. I can understand uh deeply the Western mind state to why I'd wanna join an organisation. Religion is so dead, man, nowadays, who cares, who cares about religion? It's all about selfishness and lubitons. Um, but I'm gonna be honest, the more, that's about to be exposed in society. Just look at the um, the priesthoods in different religions and Abrahamic religions, the paedophilia, all of this stuff. The more that other religious organisations get exposed, the brilliance and the light of the S G I is gonna become more radiant. And the beauty of this is, you can absolutely transform your life and practise Buddhism without being a member, my mum is one of them. Remember, this isn't something that's exclusive. This is just the most refined way of practising Buddhism, that's the, that's the only thing that I'm strict about. Everything else, I don't know nothing, man, astrology, I'm a little baby, Magna Carta, I'm a little baby. All of these things, I don't really, I don't know nothing about, Buddhism, no one, no one. It's only within the S G I that you can really develop a whole society. But if you wanna just practise for yourself, it's only chanting Nam Myo Haringe Kyu. And understanding that it's not Nichiren or an external god, but it's yourself, it's the the treasure tower within you. Other than that, I don't know nothing. But Buddhism, very strictly, I've, I'll spend my life studying it more and more to understand why all of these things are happening, I'm sure we're all experiencing it right now, the synchronicities are so intense. It's like the universe is now having an actual conversation with us, live and direct, and you can listen to it, or you, you don't have to. But if you act upon it, and also if you say thank you in your, in your heart when a sign comes, if you just say thank you. You don't have no idea, I'm sure you do actually, I'm talking to kings and queens, how fast it will respond back to you. I've never felt more protected, more in tune, more engaged, more alive, more valuable than I do today in this moment right now. But that's because I'm now listening so clearly to the universe uh and transcending the lower life states, the doubt, the ego. I know I'm always gonna be protected and also I know I've always been protected, there's no change, nothing's happened, that's suddenly different. I look back and I realise I always was to the last moment, to the last moment. I'll give an example, one time last year, me and Chris, we had absolutely no money, we were staying in a flat. And uh I'm talking about like, I was not that close to tears because I was like, how the hell, man, is this fair? How is this uni- this benevolent universe? And the worst thing is, I knew it was all just being strict to teach me stuff because I'm so young and it's got, I've got my whole life and my mission is to really help spread this. So I have to have some hard lessons sometimes, I think, but I was just so broken, man. And um, and then boom, at twenty seven past, I'm sure it was, which is the number I always talk about, for me, it's just a very profound number. At twenty seven past, five hundred pound gets landed in Chris's account for a job that we both combined did like two years ago or some shit. It was that, and 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 again, that's, I'm told, that's, that's just a side sign, like, there's just something small, you're like, but what does that mean? It means I'm protected, but why, if I'm being protected, what's that mean? Why? Because I've got something to do. And what do I have to do? I have to be my best self, that's the only answer, I don't have to be no leader, I don't have to change the world, I don't have to repost them out a thousand things. I don't have to sell pine to a million people so that they get serum and then vitamin, the best thing I all have to do is uh be happy. That is what Buddhism is about, be happy and how do you teach the next person to be happy? Like truly happy though, like, like fully, like core happy, yeah? Like absolute happiness, not relevant happiness, because it's like, the, the moment I get my Range Rover or my G Wagon that I know I'm gonna have. Yeah, that's gonna be unreal, I'm gonna be gassed, but what did like, what, and then what if my mum gets knocked over in five minutes after? Huh? Happiness gone, yeah? But my, if I had absolute happiness and I know I can always contact my mum, because past, present and future, and I understand life and I'm transforming my life. Absolute happiness. Well, that's an extreme one, but it's gonna, it's, everyone's parents are gonna die, right, one time, may even be dead already. So what the hell was a G Wagon? That's relative, it's, 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 it's only, it's only, it's only short-lived. I love you all though, thank you for being here, it's the eleventh, we've done eleven hours of study, I know some of you have been here every single time, thank you for everyone that's joining us afterwards. I have no doubt, even in ten years, fifteen years, man, there's gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna see thousands. I remember when I started this and I had a lot of doubt because I'm going through my own stuff, I'm thinking, do I wanna turn up every single week? Every single week, by the way, I'm, I'm like, the night before, I've, I've like sat there thinking, I'm gonna send out like a public email saying like, let's, let's take a week off, it's never happened though. It's never happened, but I wanted to and it's not because like, like, I'm not, I'm gonna finish this, it's not that, it's just, you know, some like, it's just a lot going on. Sometimes you can feel like you're like trying to paddle to the top and then on top of that, but actually the rewards I'm personally getting, I don't talk about donations, nothing like that, the rewards I'm personally getting. The universe is, is the universe speaking to me even more coherently and clearer, that's what's happening because I'm, I'm stepping into who I should be more. And and sharing what has really helped me, if, if some, if this has helped me in the darkest of times, and I'm sure you, you'll all meet me in individual moments and I'll tell you my life. Can't even begin to explain, if this helped me in the darkest of times, then why would I keep it to myself? Have to share it, you have to share these things and when you share it. You know, we just had the um, the sixtieth anniversary of Daisaku Akida coming to Europe on the weekend and the one thing that I saw, that I took from the uh, the Zoom call is the most beautiful thing. Uh, is, is, is one of the most basic Buddhist quotes, when you light a lantern for someone, you light your own way as well. Very simple, like the more I share my heart, and I get it wrong, but as long as I'm being authentic and real and I'm having them very difficult, like, like with close friends and stuff recently, people in my life, the most difficult conversations become the most purest opportunity for growth as soon as you have them and you realise how everything was just trying to hold you back from having them conversations, for instance. Or just expression, you know, I've been talking about the um, the Four Agreements from a beautiful book called um The Toltec Wisdom. Yeah, it's, let me think if I can remember them from the top of my head, the first one is um, be impeccable with your words, man, like just always try to use the highest vibrational words, like just you know, I, I remember years ago that I used to say something, think nine times before you say something and that's a lot of times to think, but you normally end up thinking at least twice. And then you realise actually the first one was actually just coming from the lowered ego. It's not to be dismissed, it's still a truth of mine, but do I wanna express that in a sound vibration to that person? Be impeccable with your words, man, always just try to be nice to someone. My thing always is always trying to talk to like the, the, the toilet attendants, not out of ego, so everyone looks at me and goes, look, he's really nice, like Sensei would be. No, I know why Sensei does it, because then people are often unseen, so let them be seen. Because if it wasn't for them people, this toilet would be raggedy and disgusting and it would lower my life state. When I go into Victoria and I'm seeing all shit all over the place, I would feel even worse, I'd be pissed off. But more times it's glistening clean because of some woman who's just got a mask on and so I just, I'm normally looking them in the eyes and I try to say something, more times they ignore me, nervous or something, but that's fine. I'm doing my best, I live by something called zero, one, two, three. The youth district do in the S G I, zero nagging, every day, try, and it's hard and you fail every day, every time I fail, but at least it's in my mind, zero nagging. One hour chanting, if I know it works, why not do it? I'm doing the research and this is only one level of research, the amount of books, my, my favourite one, Change Your Brainwave, Change Your Karma, if I know it works, why am I not gonna do it? Why am I gonna get on the dusty underground where everyone's energies are low? If I, if I know I can protect myself, if I know it actually transforms and helps my immune system, which it does, Change Your Brainwave, Change Your Karma, check that one out, why wouldn't I do it? Chant one hour, um and that's obviously, that's quite strict, I'm, I wouldn't suggest any of you chant an hour yet because if you start getting annoyed after twenty minutes, it's no, it's no longer to your heart's content, like Nichiren said, only chant to your heart's content. So that's zero, one, two, twenty minute study, whatever it is, whatever it is, whatever you wanna read, whether it's something basic like The Secret. Okay, cool, I'm gonna read it, just for five minutes, ten minutes, read something else, for me, I've got like, you can imagine how many books I've got, so twenty minute study. And the last of all is three, help three people, more the times it's that lady, you know? Or it's just someone random, or it might just be Ray who lives upstairs to me, who I know is racist as fuck. So I just say, my brother, you're cool, and suddenly over months of doing that, and I've got some guidance from an old man who's passed away and I love you, David, because you're no longer here, but he passed away and he told me once. You know that Ray guy that you keep moaning about, because like, when I first moved into my house, he used to piss in a bucket and then chuck it into my garden. Because he, he, he's lived here for twenty seven years, twenty seven, my number, I knew it was always, it's all a sign. He lived here for twenty seven years, he used to piss in a bucket, chuck it in the garden whenever he heard, smelt me smoking or something like that, or, you know, my brother smoking or. And he used to just mumble and he used to call me boy, you're like boy all the time. And uh when, like, when the football was going on, for instance, he'd be like, oh, your lot are amazing, just like really just outdated racist terms. But you know, I'd like, I, I get it, this, the, the whole system is designed to make people think I'm a thug, so I'm not even angry at him, I'm not angry at him, I'll be straight, I'm angry at the system, you know? Protocols of the wise Menazai on these kind of things. So anyway, I got this guidance from David, he was, um, he's passed away now, but he's very old and he just said to me, why didn't you write him a letter for Christmas, like a, like a Christmas card? It was just very simple, but I knew what he was telling me, he was telling me, don't give up, show your higher self and he wasn't a Buddhist, the guy was an alcoholic. But he just, the mystic law must have stepped into him to channel to me in that moment because I deeply respected him. And he said, just give him a Christmas card and from that day, and I didn't, I don't, I don't think I even gave him a Christmas card, but I went one better. On the notice board, in, in lockdown, I just wrote a note saying, this is Aaron Indigo, the son of Kim from downstairs. If anyone needs anything, if you want me to do your shopping, anything, just come to me. And yeah, he doesn't really talk to me anymore, but there's a, there's a shift in the heart of him, he sees me and uh he, he doesn't call me boy anymore, like, and so what I mean is try and just help people, that's what Buddhism is about. But we can't freaking help people if we're in the shit, if we're low, if we're not blossoming. We can't blossom if we're not being impeccable with our words, what was the other three before I leave? Don't take nothing personally, I think that's number three, but it's really, it's interesting how much you take things personally. When someone says something to you, they judge you, they're moaning at you, realise this, they're coming from their perspective and from their world, from their reality. Don't take it personally, if I was taking it personally, he's calling me boy, what, does that, if I took it personally, that means I actually am a boy and I think that you're my slave owner, no, no, I don't take it personally, I get it, bro, like, it's cool. Try your best always, it's like today, I was thinking, do I sit down and have a, like, do I just relax for five minutes before I speak to you guys? Or do I chant and do Gong Yo really fast because I can do it in five minutes, it's, it's no longer thirty minutes? But I thought, no, I can't do it, man, I'm too tired, I've had a long day. And then I just thought of the Four Agreements, yeah, you're trying your best, that's all you gotta do, try your best, your best will change from next week, I might be prepared and have all the energy and have three hours spare. So my best would be different, my best then would be for me to chant for one hour. Anyway, I love you, let me do um Sancho with you, that's three times chanting and then we will all leave. Um, I took six minutes more of your time, I'm sorry. So, let's go. Nam Myo Ho Renge Kyu, Nam Myo Ho Renge Kyu, Nam Myo Ho Renge Kyu. I love you, thank you, you're all uh what keeps me strong. You're an example of myself, a reflection of myself and I'm only around kings and queens, so thank you and also for everyone that's watching later. I love you, Nam Myo Haringe Kyu, can't wait to be able to be around you more physically. Bless, next week.